All right, it's six o'clock, I'll call this meeting to order. The whole call is being taken electronically. I think everybody's here although Nicole is going to be virtual and I can't quite tell. This meeting of the Ripon area school district for education has been properly noticed in accordance with the open being law and state statute nineteen point eighty-four and related legal references. We are one of Wisconsin's finest school districts and we're fostering excellence for all through innovation. And the first thing we'd like to do is recognize the state wrestling competitors, so I understand one of them is second. Go ahead, I'm gonna let you talk. What are you saying? Right in here.
This is Jordan Perkins, he was our one ninety holder this year. As a junior, it was his first time making it to state. I also had Joey Williams as senior who was unable to be here due to illness. It is Ripon's first time having two at the same time since twenty seventeen go to state. They competed the first night, unfortunately they lost their matches and that ended their state wrestling tournament, but that can't take away from the honor of being down there at state. They were one of twelve wrestlers in their division in the state of Wisconsin for division two. So it was a great honor to be down there coaching them. This season, he had a great season along with Joey, so Jordan, anything you want to add?
It was a really great time, I went a lot, definitely worth the experience.
How long have you been doing wrestling?
Since third grade.
Okay, cool.
Did you know anything about the guy you had to come up against in the first round?
Not really, I just knew he was quick, knew how to take shots.
And you found out that he was really quick.
You still weigh one ninety?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, usually after weigh-ins that we put on, they usually put on five hundred pounds, so it just happens, so.
So we've got a certificate for you, Jordan. So congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. And we have another pair that we'd like to recognize. So this is for Wisconsin's state competitor in Poetry Out Loud. So Cassidy and Willow can come on up here. And tell us a little bit about your experience.
Well, my name's Willow and this was my second year doing poetry out loud.
My name's Cassie, I'm a junior and this is my first year.
It was a really good experience, very competitive this year. But I mean, it was fun and something that we both enjoyed doing and put a lot of like time in and a lot of hard work in and it was really fun doing it with Mr. Regal who's been a good coach. But it was just fun to do and I'm sad that it was my last year, but I'm glad that Cassie will probably be able to do it next year, so.
Where was it?
Madison.
Out in Madison. People from all over the state, I assume?
Can you tell us what it means poetry out loud? Are you reading something that you prepared? Do you make up things on the spot, all of the above?
So it's like a recitation competition and so there's a website called Poetry Out Loud and you have to pick from that website. So when, once you get to state, you have to do three poems that are memorized. One of them has to be Twenty Five Lights or Pure, one of them has to be from the pre nineteen hundreds and then another one is just any poem you pick. And so you're graded based on memorization, just how good your recitation was, enunciation, just like physical appearance, everything like that.
Very good.
So it's like a forensic kind of?
Yeah.
Wonderful.
They're memorized?
Yeah.
Share the title of one of your poems that you liked and who wrote it.
Um, my favorite one was My Dad in Tardines, that was by Troy Derek Pot. That was actually one that I did last year too, so I just brought it back for this year.
Um, one of my favorites was called April Midnight. Um, I didn't go to state last year because I actually didn't know about it, but I hope to try to get there again next year.
Hopefully we'll see you again.
Yeah.
Congratulations. We don't have any written comments? And no one has signed up? So it's time to adopt the agenda, I'd like to make a small change in the order of items with your consent. We have, in future action items, we have the discussion of St. Wolfens Law Street improvements and I'd like to move it up front because we got people who need to get back downtown again.
So.
Okay.
Second.
We'll make it official here. So if you scroll down that. We will adjust the agenda. Did you change, we're just moving the information items to public contact items. In one eleven to be right now. We'll just start with it, okay? So we'll stick it in at five point oh or whatever. Can you do that?
Um, I can't, I'd have to move the entire category in order to do it electronically, but I can note it in minutes.
Okay? All right, so that puts the Wentzis Law Street improvements up for discussion right now.
Usually I just invite you to come up to the chairs that are there and you can speak into the mic of the clear so your listeners are thinking.
All right. Thank you, I'm Ansa, City Minister and brought Mayor Ted Grant with us, thank you for accommodating our meeting at seven, so we'll try to get this rolling, but.
We're so excited to have you here, this is a project we've been very excited about for a number of years, so kudos to you for what we've already done.
We're trying, gotta keep it moving, right? We're just moved on, anyway. Um, so St. Wolfens Law Street, obviously, a project over the last three years we've been discussing with the city, capital improvement plan, the habit on the back of it for this year. Been doing a lot of planning, there's utilities and stormwater issues that need to be addressed, the road condition, obviously if you've driven it, you understand. Um, so the, you know, the very, it's a pretty big project for the city, above anywhere from one to one point five million dollars. Our engineers have been getting things lined up for the project. We've been working with the school district to talk about possible enhancements and improvements. So the project, we hope to have finalized and designed in bid in, or sorry, April. And it's about a three-month project, so we gotta keep this moving, so we don't want to obviously delay too many things for you all in terms of fall sports seasons, but we're being realistic at this point as well and understand that these projects are complex and take some time. So one of the things that has been discussed throughout the project is just general safety and enhancements with sidewalks. So our intention would be to take the road to a two-way street the entire way, there's no one-way pass Belleville or Belleville. Um, and then as well as add a significant amount of sidewalk where there isn't sidewalk. There are a lot of issues with this street in terms of the condition of everything, but it's also an issue of how wide it is. We are trying to fit a lot of stuff in a non-standard shorter, smaller right-of-way and then you have elements that complicate things even further like fencing and light poles and on and on and on. So there's a lot of moving parts to this, but ultimately I provided Mary, or Dr. Woodrock, a waiver of assessment. There is sidewalk that is going to go in at the request of the district in areas that there isn't sidewalk and replacing sidewalk that generally wouldn't be replaced with the project had it not been for requests by the district. Um, so that was provided to you, I believe the overall assessment was around sixty, just over sixty thousand dollars. There's a likelihood that that goes up a little bit, that is just an estimate as well. We will have firm bids in hopefully the next month to give you a better number of what that will be. And then if there's any additional work that needs to occur after the bidding or after, if we plan something out or we can accommodate additional requests, we can come back with additional change orders or other things to accommodate those requests. So a lot of moving parts, kind of a short timeline, but we wanted to bring it forward and just have a discussion and answer your questions.
Some little.
Okay, thank you.
So the memo that we received mentioned, and you also mentioned that we have some issues that are going to run up into the fall sports season. How are we going to be accommodating that? Are we simply rerouting pedestrians, are we rerouting traffic? Are people just going to need to enter and exit at different points to go around the work?
I think at this point it's kind of a work in progress because it could be ending all of those, all the way up to Brian's like building, may shuttle from another parking lot, we'll just have to see because we don't know where the project will be at the time that we have, you know, home events. But I think could be ending all of those. You know, the city's used to working with roads where there are residents and people even have some access. But you know, when we had the Watson Street was done, there was a period of time where we worked on a different road and kind of just walked in and so we'll have to accommodate that.
And depending on the standard project will depend on what accommodations happen maybe.
And our goal technically really to is utilities usually go first. So the establishment of the utilities would happen hopefully long before you have any events there or anything can coordinate that. But out of, you know, having a street where it's a gravel, you can still drive on it and park on it, but certainly having no bathrooms or water, you can't have an event. So we'll try to work those.
Unless we bring in, you know, portable, you know, units or things like that, which may not be ideal, but could work because we're excited to get the project done.
Question for you, so there is stuff that gets, Inglestilts is used over the summer too, will it be available as long as people can find a way on the field out?
Yeah, there's no reason from our end that Inglestilts wouldn't be open and I think it's just going to be a lot of communication and making sure that we've got information on our website to let people have a lot of access of in good contact to find out where to direct their patients.
Gary, you got a question?
Yeah, so are there overhead pole-mounted power lines that you're talking about, Barry? I mean, it's not.
That's, that's not the city though that would be Alliance Energy, it would be, we're just starting that conversation with them. They haven't been, my understanding is they haven't thought it was possible. There may still be a little window of time, but that could always come at a later date too.
And what's the, I mean, obviously the more you can put underground, the nicer it is? Is that the meaning?
I think that would be all of our ultimate goal, that that lines would be buried there too and, you know.
Yeah, I think ultimately this project may take a couple, you know, phases just to kind of get everything cleaned up over a period of time. It's just Alliance Energy with some of their issues in terms of supply chain and every project you ask them to do, it is taking a lot longer unless you want to pay to have it relocated, which could frankly weigh costly. So I think just the right planning and making sure that, you know, we have a meeting in the next week or so with them to say, okay, this is what the city's plan is, ensuring that that fits with something they can do and we're not putting something where they would either put something or the district has to accommodate a transformer request or relocation. So there's a lot of moving parts there, but ultimately I think that is the shared goal is to get those underground, but they are kind of the third party that has their process.
And that would have to be done presumably before you recheck the sidewalks on the street, right?
I think realistically the best case scenario is that Alliance comes through with a contractor or has the contractor install conduits underground as part of the project. If not, they will go under and bore in the future. They will go underground.
Sure, they're doing all over town, sure they.
That cable, sure. Okay, that makes sense, thank you.
We're just trying to say, oh, you can get everything, you know, I guess that's kind of just where we're at. It's just if everything can come together, it might make it a little easier for them and for the sidewalks and everything, but yeah. The city has to, I mean, they have to move, they have to get their bid out and keep going in order for it to still be a twenty twenty-four project which we're excited about. And we're so happy that you could come just to let them know here from you and kind of what your timeline is.
I just would be excited over just a safety aspect of what's being done because I've always felt it was so unsafe. You know, where the church and the fence meet, cars, people in and out, so just the safety.
Be nice to have a two-way street because there are also people who come out of our parking lot and go the long way for that first little bit.
I, I've done it because for years it was a two-way street.
Right.
And I just can't get it into my head that it's a one-way street now, so I'm sure there are a lot of people who don't see that.
Well, after the fall, we can just let that, it's just the way it was.
I won't be a lullaby anymore.
Any other questions? Otherwise we'll keep you updated as we know more and then we will bring this back next month for approval for what we have. And then again, if there's anything that changes or if we have the option to add anything, I'll bring that back this month.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
We did pretty good with timing, too, yeah.
Oh, we're good.
Thank you, I'll see you next in Ripon.
All right, so we'll return then to the regular order of items, so that takes us to announcements and contributions to the district.
All right, we're thankful for a number of contributions. Kind of the oil, Dave Black donated a thousand dollars and that was through the Mobile Education Alliance grant and it was five hundred to the Ripon Middle School and five hundred to Ripon High School. White Tail Unlimited donated five hundred and seventy-five dollars to the Ripon High School Outdoor Club. Ripon New Corliss donated twelve hundred dollars, that goes to our student needs fund and that was through their new street dinner, which was a huge success as an event. And Janet Clark, Dave Rasmussen, Gary and Julie Corn and Cindy and Richie donated two hundred and fifty dollars or more to the Ripon Education Foundation. So I'm very thankful for all those who remembered the district and as they were making contributions.
We don't have a student council representative tonight, so we'll move on to new business. And the first item is to consider approval of Murray Park West air conditioner replacement using Fund forty-six. But I have a motion to put that on the floor.
I move to approve the AC replacement as presented.
All right. Discussion. Go ahead, Brian, come on up. So it's ancient, it doesn't work anymore and it really needs to be replaced.
It's, I need to slow that. So the bids, the bids actually came in quite a bit lower than what we originally thought. Um, we are at a nineteen-week window, um, once you approve it tonight. Um, both vendors have at least a nineteen-week window before they're going to have equipment on site. So we'll be looking at the end of summer, end of summer, probably fall for the replacement. So the vendors we picked are vendors that we've worked with in the past and school districts in the area have to do some for renovations and things like that. I think our biggest, very best hurdle is going to be when we get the equipment on site. And I think that's, that's the biggest on loan that we'll have. But hopefully maturely that, we'll see it sometime in the late to temporary October, but we would definitely look to limp the old, older equipment to get through the worst of the season because we will have to have it shut down for a little while.
Is this work that is going to be relatively easy to do with school reception?
I'm hoping we can, it should, it should all be maintained through that upper storage unit where the air handlers are and then bring in a unit from outside. You know, so I mean, we would definitely look at when, hopefully we can move equipment out and things like that on a non-school day if we don't have, you know, the building full of, full of, you know.
Any other questions?
Comments?
You ready to vote? I'll call for the vote. And it's proved unanimous, so. We will move on to consider approval of the near-site alternative school for twenty-four, twenty-five. Again, is there a motion to put this on the floor? Discussion.
I got a question here. How are we going to save fifteen thousand dollars to do investment?
To answer the question, the biggest thing is we, we're paying more than three hundred thousand in tuition to the alternative schools that those eight students are in currently. And so instead of paying another school, most of it is to CISA six. Instead of paying CISA six to their alternative school, we're creating our own near-site school that can serve those students and, but the way that we have to do that is by hiring teachers and aides to have a very low student-teacher ratio. So that they can, they can do that. The other thing is, we currently have two van routes and we're going to reduce that down to one and it'll be an inner-city route. All these students live in our district, so it'll just stay in the district and it'll be one instead of two. And those, those van routes, you know, they cost, I can't.
A price of two hundred dollars a day for one route.
Yeah, so you suggested that the transportation is going to go from, it's going to drop forty thousand dollars right there. Yeah.
What is the recommended ratio for teachers-to-students with this type of?
There isn't, there isn't any D K I won't have recommendations for special education members because it's based on need, based on student need. And as we talked, we needed four, we felt like we needed four adults on site because two could be handling a bad behavior, two can continue on with instruction that's going, you know, going on and it doesn't shut a whole classroom down if you have only two people.
One of the things that we realized when we had Blossom, or other alternative off-site school, when you have one teacher and that teacher's out sick, it's really hard to get someone else to sub in and just know the kids and keep things flowing and make those connections. So we thought if we have two teachers, even if one teacher's out, the other three would be able to continue. Or if a sub did come in, the teacher would be right there to make use of those extra rooms and help in terms of. So we hope this will, will keep the school open at most days. Because with Blossom, there were days where we had to switch to virtual learning for a day because we just didn't feel like we had a staff. To, I shouldn't say, but like to meet and really meet the needs of the kids and that creates frustration in the kids because that's obviously not the point of the school.
It's not invited, you can just put somebody back to new, into like the students need to know.
So kind of to build off Denise's question, how many students can that facility take? We're just planning for the eight that we have, but ours could increase or presumably that could possibly be somebody close by who would rather come to us rather than support this. Would we have the staffing and the space to handle that?
I think right now we feel like we have adequate numbers in our district to keep it running with our own students and not necessarily having a seat being taken up by an outside district student. Then if we need that seat, it's not available. I'd really like it to stay to that, you know, eight to four ratio, but maybe up to ten at a point, but I wouldn't, I don't want to go much higher because they need the very small individualized instruction.
But we would have room if our own population grew slightly, you know.
Possibly, yeah, I think it's, it'll be dependent on the needs too, you know. If you have a certain number of teams that are just really high in needs, that almost, you know, doubles the number just based on the need.
And hopefully we'll have, those four adults will have enough capacity that we don't have to send anybody to another facility, but it, you know, depends on the student needs, like you were saying, so, yeah.
That's always the emergency, just please go back to the home students and do what you did initially.
However, I do appreciate what you're saying, I know that's something that we talked through, that any point in time we don't have the numbers with our students and have multiple seats open and we still wanted to reserve one in case we had any students in the population of the district. That is certainly a way for us to continue to keep the school full so that we're able to give that job security to the staff that we put in the event center.
Yeah, and we do already have districts knocking on the door and asking, because the seats are full, seats are full everywhere. There's such a high need. So also by us doing this, it opens up some seats that we have that other districts are going to be able to use and CISA schools now.
And I think you also said that it's fluid so that some of these students may go into the other specialized program or record.
Yes, transition into cross-categorical programming throughout the year, parts of the day, different things like that, yes.
Maybe even into the regular rep or something, I mean, is it new for part of the? I know as a former sub teacher, it would be so nice to be able to have everyone in the same district so that you can oversee, plus as a parent and grandparent of someone with I E Ps, I would feel better having my, my family in this district.
And in the past, we just had to go where the people were to take care of our students' needs, but yes, we've, we've definitely thought hard about that and the ease that transitions will be just coming across town, you can have that, even a student over for a class or two or even transitioning for a half a day or a full day makes it a lot easier than the students that I have in transition right now. Curriculum doesn't line up, hours of the day don't line up, it's running a midday route, which is an additional cost on top of the already high transportation costs if a student is in a transition phase and you can't just take them from that environment and put them in here a full day, it doesn't work. So as we transition to a couple hours or a half a day, that sometimes is adding an additional transportation route as well.
And the students will feel like part of this community where they live.
Yes, and that's what we want as well, we want them to get out and do community projects, to have connections to Ripon College, to Collaborative Wellness, to other area businesses and groups that want to partner with us to do some different community outreach and things like that.
Gary, did you?
I was just wondering, this is going to be located in the site where Crossroads Academy, the Hexing.
Correct.
Is there, is there a lot of physical work to be done in the site?
No, actually Bryon and I went on a tour to just kind of take a peek and we need to add a couple additional cameras. And.
Really adding the additional cameras and adding an updated door system.
Yes.
The only thing is, most of that stuff I was going to move to the Crossroads site, but, you know, we have a lot of things in place already there that'll be used to do that tracking and every ability if we need to locate anything else.
Right. Furniture that's there already can be used or there's furniture in the district depending on what Mr. Brooks wants for his program. But he had already stated that he didn't want some of the furniture and things that are there. We anticipate our students to be working off of Chromebooks, so I have to work with Travis to see if there's anything that needs to be updated that way, but he's always kept that feeling very up to date as far as technology goes anyway because that was the basis of what those students worked on was a computerized program. So we should have the ability to do what we need to with our Chromebooks. So there shouldn't be too much extra. We did have a line in there at one time and then we kind of took it back out thinking we have so many district resources already to pull from, things in storage, things in buildings that aren't being. we have so many district resources already to pull from, things in storage, things in buildings that aren't being used. Curriculum that's already here would go over there to be used, so there isn't a whole lot that would be extra.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion?
This has been a conversation over quite a period of time and it is so exciting to be at a place where we're ready to have that conversation because it just also fell in place with the changes for Crossroads because prior to that, we had done some tours at different places within the city and it just wasn't the space that we felt was the right space so that delayed us from doing this, but I think this board and, and I know the district too has always had a feeling that we want our kids right here in our place so that we can, um, do all those things that we spoke of Lori, just keep them close in that opinion, yeah.
It's a great idea.
Great, I'll call for the vote. And it passes unanimously. We move on to a one item of personnel. Consider approval of the staff voluntary transfer. So this is the third grade. Is there a motion to put it on the floor? Do you, Tom? Second?
Awesome. I'm just kidding, this is kind of so much, I hope you're shopping.
Ah, you're good, that's Lori, don't worry. Discussion? Who's the rating?
So she was tracking, uh, the class, the better.
Kind of larger class. Renee, do you want to speak to that? He was just asking about her, her process as she's moved from one grade to another.
How's the tracking work?
I don't know if you want, if you want to come up with a.
Um, yeah, so, um, we had, we had a bubble class, um, a couple of years ago and so we attended to that by adding on that section of, um, the teacher. And so, um, McKenna has been with that class now for a year and a half. We had a resignation at semester, um, that first year of that class. Um, McKenna had student taught that year, um, in third grade and so she applied for, interviewed for and, um, transitioned into this job at semester. And so these kids have been with her for the last year and a half and, um, it's gone well. I shouldn't say they're all the same kids, um, but she's had some of the same kids, um, so they didn't all just loop with her. We reshuffled a lot based upon the things that she learned about kids and different kids who move in or move out and that sort of thing. But at this point, like her, her love is third grade and so with, um, Jesse taking my position, um, that position, um, was available and that was her first pick. And because that position will also end after next year, she, you know, she wanted that certainty too of where she would be in the group, so, yeah.
And we've been successful when we've had positions like that through other retirements or movements that have been there to be able to retain our staff.
For sure, yeah, and we, you know, we did go through, um, you know, an abbreviated interview process, but nonetheless still, um, went through that process and, and she was the, the one person that, you know, specifically was interested in that, because she had her position. And again, because her position would end after another year, it moved since, so.
Any other question?
All right, thank you. I'll call for the vote. Also passes unanimously. Move on to the consent agenda. Is there any item in the consent agenda anyone would like to move? If not, I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second? Tom? And that passes unanimously. So we move on to possible upcoming agenda items or action items. And the first several are all administrative guideline or administrative files and policy provisions from Miola. And I don't think there were any that were anything other than basically technical.
Yeah, the only one that, that we were reading, just some more information from our, um, instructional staff was the, I think, um, independent study. There were some areas that weren't checked, um, and the limits, you know, has everything, everything updated. So it is fifty-one thirty-six, um, that's the, um, that will, um, no, it's twenty-three seventy-eight, independent study, it's revised, but it has, um, acknowledged now, and things like. But our team would, would look at it. I think it's just a little clearer so that you have a better idea of what it would actually look like if this team launched a new independent study.
So you take a look at.
That'd be on for two more months, there's, there's not so time to look at it.
Two more months. So we'll take a look at that. Anybody interested? Otherwise, take a look through, they're pretty, they were just pretty technical changes for the most part. That's what Miola's cleaning up right now. So we'll move on to approval of the accountant job description. So again, this is coming up in the future, but any questions about the job description?
Is that a question? It wasn't about the description itself, but I'm assuming this is going to work with Jonah right in your office. So will this address any of the, um, the audit checks and balances that sometimes they have said because we don't have additional staff? In the audit, you know, will it, oh.
No, I, you know, the auditor said that the, uh,
Jonah, would you come up just, yeah, that's kind of a permanent, just kind of permanent position, just because of size.
This is really just the job description, this is the.
Our current position, yeah.
Yeah, it's just the current position. We're trying to just get job descriptions everybody afford approved. And, um, so yeah, this will not address that issue, but the accountant said that they, they work at more than fifty districts and they said there's the same issue in every district. And I think that, um, you know, we have as much oversight, we have, we have as much differentiation and, and and safety as we can have, I think, um, as it is. And so yeah, this, this is just approving the job as it stands now to get board approval on what the job is.
And this is part of the overall job description update.
Yeah.
Pro process, it's not addressing any particular.
No, not at all, no, no, no. Currently, you know, Jen Furch is our accountant and, uh, she's outstanding and it'll be very difficult for the district when she decides to retire, so, uh, but yeah, no, we're, no problems at all, so.
And then other issue goes back to it's, it's permanent.
Yeah.
The one about the audit, whenever they say, it's just all small businesses have a problem of not employing enough staff to have redundancy.
Yeah, I didn't realize this was just an up, like an update of a current.
Yeah.
Read into that.
But you might as well stay there because the next upcoming, possible upcoming action item is the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Anybody have comments or questions for Jonah about this first draft?
The president chose this balance. Right?
Yeah. That's, it's a, it's a plan to have a, a balanced budget, yeah.
The Esser fund's gone and.
Yeah, so the goal is for this year to spend nine hundred thousand on Esser and then have just over five hundred thousand next year, but then after that it'll be completely gone. So this is kind of just a gradual release of those, of that revenue.
There really aren't that many position reductions that I saw, so that's really great.
So when do we expect to see the next iteration?
We might not, um, you know, this is a preliminary, so it'll go again next month. I don't know that we'll have any changes for next month because I don't know that there's anything that we're debating right now, yeah. At, in September, we'll see the actual, uh, that'll be for, at any meeting, we'll, we'll approve that to then again in October with the final state numbers. But right now, there are a few things that are, that are somewhat debatable, I guess, but we'll see if there's, we'll see if there's any changes that would put benefit or for us, I guess, between now and like June, July, anybody come back to the board, uh, with some things, I guess, I, I don't know. Right now, I don't know.
Yeah, okay, fair enough.
Then I might do that there's an adjustment of the amount of Esther that's used one way or another.
Exactly, yeah.
You know, if the change is to our benefit, um, and we're, we're running a little tighter, then, um, we can always do some of that too, so, but it's our goal not to. When do we generally move on, Lori?
Uh, we, we make projections in September, but then we actually start it by the weather in October because the state doesn't give us a lot of information until the middle of October, so we need that to step in there.
All right?
Thank you.
Any questions? Moving on? We get to legislative updates and super technical reports.
Yeah, and I, um, probably the one thing that I just want to, um, talk a little bit about, we know, um, we have our strategic planning process coming forward. We'll use a process that we used like two years ago when we went through and, um, and then last year as well. And we let, and we just reviewed our instructional kind of plans and strategies, um, and set a course. We will separate out in the buildings again, so it'll be a nice way to be able to interact and then kind of phone down a, a building. Um, maybe locally, it'll be interesting because we'll be working with, um, two new principals and, um, and I want to make sure that we have that solid plan looking forward with some action steps and, and things that will come forward. That's probably one of the biggest, I don't, I think there's been a little bit of action with, um, Act Twenty, just in terms of, you know, if there's anything that you want to speak on, Chris, just to screen your some timelines, I think that's probably one of our biggest things that's moving right now in terms of legislation and.
That's one of the things that I highlighted in my curriculum, um, highlights as well. Uh, I think the biggest update that we received is, um, DPI has released um, a series of different professional developments that our teachers, um, we can select from for our teachers to get the training. Um, we were hoping that CISA six was actually going to be one of the partners selected to actually be able to provide the training. However, um, DPI did not approve them. We are able to partner with them to help facilitate the training that they actually receive through the different modules that they have to complete, uh, which is our plan. Um, however, we have to, um, choose from an approved list from the state. So our plan is, um, rather than have the teachers just complete a list of modules, um, and doing that independently, we are hoping to be able to do some of our PD days to be able to work together through both the unknown modules and facilitate that PD. Um, and then also on alternate months, work with our, um, CISA six partners to help facilitate some of that learning as well. Um, we are potentially working at, um, adding a couple of days, um, so that we can get that training in this next school year. The training is really intensive, time-intensive. Um, and we just want to really make sure that we do a really solid job of making sure that our teachers feel comfortable with, um, the new material. Um, a lot of the material, I shouldn't say it's new because we really have been, um, preparing our teachers for the last couple of years, which we feel like we're in a really good place. Um, but again, this is really a required, it's everyone from the state, so this is kind of one of the steps we are going through and, um, just thought that that would be a good model, um, for our teachers as we prepare them.
That's, I'm not sure I've kept up thoroughly with Act Twenty. Is it true that Act Twenty requires that their grades be held back if they don't reach a certain level of the need?
That is, yes, that is.
And are we expecting that, by based on history, are we expecting that that's going to be an issue for us?
We don't know, um, there is, with Act Twenty, there's extensive monitoring, so we really have to identify the bottom twenty-five percent of our students in each of our classes. Um, and with that, we have to develop an individualized reading plan and do extensive progress monitoring. Um, there is a screener that is, we're also waiting for the state to determine what screener will be used for our four K through three three students, um, along with diagnostics that need to be given as part of the progress monitoring. So I feel like we're in so much of a holding pattern, waiting for the state to really inform us of what the selected materials are. Um, and there's just a lot of guidance that we need from the state yet. Um, this screener was supposed to be issued, um, this coming fall and already the state has pushed that back to January twenty-twenty-five. Um, so we have some decisions to make, big decisions coming up because we still feel as a district that that's an important piece for all of our students in the fall, um, to help determine where they're at. So it'll be some big conversations coming up, I'm sure. Um, and lots of updates provided. Like you said, we're just, we're kind of in that holding pattern. Um, we're at the mercy of decision-making at the state level at the moment.
Is this another example of the legislature not caring about educational opinion? Because isn't it still true that holding, keeping students back is still not recommended policy for all sorts of reasons, isn't it?
I'm not, I don't know if a final decision has made, has been made in terms of what that will look like. I know the goal is that by doing the individualized reading plans and doing that progress monitoring, um, I know summer school will be mandated again for students that follow into that. I think there has to be a reasonable amount of evidence shown that we tried to get students to show that growth. And again, I think there's a loophole for that, I don't get so tuned because I'm really, I don't know that certain that quite yet.
And special education, are that as well?
Yes, um, groups, yeah. EL, special ed, yes.
So wouldn't the diagnostic testing inform someone the training? So I mean, it seems like the curve is something, or not?
Um, well, the diagnostic or the screener that's going to, um, be selected is where we're going to focus on foundational skills. Um, so some of your phonics and that sort of thing. Um, it's very specific in terms of what that screener has to measure, um, which is why it's taking some time for the state to determine which vendor to go with. Um, as you all know, we've been using I W for years, um, and we still like that option, but we don't know for sure if I W is even going to be an approved vendor, which helps determine where we go to, and our contract is up with I W this year. Um, and actually going to be meeting with our vendor, um, to talk about some options, even if it's like a one-year option, I guess, until we know for sure where the state is at. I just, I, I don't want to make rushed decisions and select something else only to find out that we're going to have to do something different again, so.
And there was another training.
Correct, I turn the state of course with what we know, at least for this year, this coming year, until we know for sure. Um, but we will be required to administer the screener, um, showed them by the state for sure in January and again at the end of the next school year. Um, we will, if the state is supposed to reverse the cost of the new screener, that's supposed to be covered, so that's good news for us. Um, but the diagnostic is not covered. And the diagnostic is what we use to, um, really help determine progress monitoring for all of our students to see if we've met the individualized reading plans for us, so.
Are they developing the screener then themselves?
No, they're working with different vendors to determine which one best meets, um, the different criteria that we have to measure. No, they're working with different vendors to determine which one best meets, um, the different criteria that you have to measure. So lots of information, and I will, I definitely will be sharing an update probably June, um, just over a year of Act Twenty, and really what, um, what our district plan is, so that you guys are willing to overreact to this.
This is on, on the website already?
Yes, yeah.
What's your level of confidence in the January update?
Um, well, it has now gone through for approval, so, um, we know for sure it won't happen in fall, uh, but they have approved January, but, um, they've also just released, um, there's four companies that they have approved for curriculum resources that actually have met all of the criteria to. It, it just needs to keep them in the update, so you're right, because I'm not really sure, who knows? It's kind of like, you know, pick it up, so.
I thought CISA six had some kind of workaround so that they could assist districts?
They had tried, um, they had written an amendment to, um, to take before the state, and the state unfortunately did not approve it, because, um, even though, and it's a little frustrating, because a lot of the work that we have been doing with, um, CISA six aligns completely to, you know, all of the different, um, learning that our teachers will be required. Um, the state is just very grounded in making sure that it is absolutely research-based and grounded, so they're looking for very large, um, not companies, but, um, very research-based training for our teachers that has been around for some time. So with our partnership with CISA, they actually, um, are completing the same modules of training that we are going to be doing, and they're basically will help facilitate the learning, so it's kind of a workaround, um.
We still have some nice partnership opportunities with CISA, because of the way that they're wanting to do that, and, and that's nice to have that. I saw that Governor Eager's just passed all winter wings on Friday, and there was some school things in there, I didn't have a chance to look at it, I just know, was that any of this or no?
Yes, yes, mhm, a lot of it, although, yes, some things get approved, some things get delayed, and it's just so, it's kind of evident going right now, so. Any questions? So like I said, I do plan to provide an update once I have something selling, which is, that would be for sure.
I tried to do two things at once, here we do legislative updates.
But it is a legislative update, so.
Right, and you don't have anything more?
I don't have anything more, so you have, if there's anything else with any curriculum.
Is there anything else in the curriculum, notes that anybody wants to discuss or ask questions about? It looks like not, so we'll move on.
Thank you. I hope the testing goes well.
Me too.
Yeah.
My office right now is testing functions.
Yes.
All right, so that takes us to the food service interim budget report. Anything for Jonah? No. So then we'll move on to the general fund interim budget report. Again, anything for Jonah?
David, I just wanted to mention one thing, next month, I'm going to, uh, bring a budget revision to the board. We've been doing this historically for the, in April for the past few years, and it'll get us to a pretty close idea of where revenue and expenses will be for the end of the year, and, um, as Dr. Whitrock just mentioned about Esther three, we'll have, you know, final projections on what we're going to spend out of Esther three this year, and, uh, so that'll be next month, so.
Thank you. All right, we move on to school operations reports, any comments that anybody would like to make on any of the schools' reports? I think that takes us to future planning, like advanced planning. So we have the school board election, of course, next Tuesday. And then we have our last board meeting of the year.
With the current.
The current, the current board on April fifteenth, and then on April twenty-second, we have a photo session before the reorganization meeting, so if we can all be a little bit early.
I, I think, I think, I think I'm going to have to change that, because we are going to have some members who are not able to be able to compare, but we've already.
True, that's right.
So to make it worthwhile, with the expense of moving to that, we'd like to just.
To a different date.
Move that to a different.
Makes sense. But we do have a reorganization meeting at six, okay? And then we have strategic planning, as Mary said, on May sixth, from five to seven in here. That takes us to the meeting, so is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
We may vote. All right, we are adjourned, thank you all very much for attending.